If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the public comment section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Good evening and welcome to the January 14th, 2025 Board of Commissioners Meeting. We have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. Is Robbie Eldago, did I say Eldago? Did I say that? A dog. You'll say it correctly, sir. You're recognized for an invocation tonight. You're with Team Missions International.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here.
If you will stand for the prayer. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the commissioners here tonight. Lord, we lift up Thad and Kim and Rob and Tom and Katie to you. Lord, we ask for strength and wisdom tonight, Lord, that you'd give them a freshness about the business today, Lord. We ask your Holy Spirit to lead and guide the conversation tonight, Lord. We thank you for every person present here tonight, Lord, with intentionality to take care of business tonight, Lord. We ask, Lord, that you would increase communication in this place tonight, Lord. We ask, Lord, that your business would be done. We thank you for a county, Lord, that would ask your blessing on business, Lord, that would ask your hand to guide the business tonight, Lord. We ask that no hindrances would be in the place tonight, Lord, but that you would give everyone in this place clarity of thought, Lord, that everybody would be an example of how to have good etiquette and business tonight, Lord, and may your name be glorified in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, stays standing if you would. Commissioner Delaney.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every duty just as for all.
Okay, commissioners, we have minutes to approve for the October 22nd, 2024 regular board meeting and also the November 7th, 2024 zoning meeting. Is there a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Goodson. We have a second by Commissioner Altman. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. Thank you very much. We'll show that passes 5-0. On the resolutions tonight, Dawn, if you don't mind, we'll take you third, okay? We'll get the other two out of here. Commissioner Altman, you have a resolution tonight. You're recognized to explain your resolution, sir. We can come back if you want, sir.
Do you have your group here?
Yeah, I do. I have the resolution. You want to invite the group up?
Yes, please.
So, we have some folks for National CRNA Week. Is there anyone here for that tonight? All right, Commissioner Altman, you're recognized, sir.
Okay, this is a resolution recognizing very important service provider in our community. It's our registered nurse anesthetist. Basically, it reads Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist, also known as nurse anesthesiologists or nurse anesthetists are advanced in practice registered nurses who have been providing anesthesia care to patients in the United States for more than 150 years. And it declares here in Brevard County that we would declare National CRNA Week, January 19th to January 25, 2025. And that's the resolution.
Okay. And, sir, you'd like to make a motion to pass that?
Yes, I move that we pass this resolution recognizing National CRNA Week.
Second.
And we have, okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Altman. We have a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes, and we'll show that passes 5-0. And then, Commissioner, I guess you'll give the framed resolution to your group when you see them. Okay, sir. Okay, we're going to go to the next resolution. Commissioner Goodson, do you want to introduce, ask your folks, and then I'll go ahead? Okay.
Would you please come up? Anyone here for the weightlifting?
For the powerlifting program? Frank Buzzo and your group?
Right. After we present it, then you'll be able to speak.
Families welcome too, if you'd like. You could come here to the podium after we're done, then we'll recognize you to speak. Okay. Okay, I'm reading this on behalf of Commissioner Goodson tonight. We have a resolution recognizing the Fitness Club Youth Powerlifting Team. Whereas the Fitness Club Youth Powerlifting Program, FCYP, located at the Fitness Club Merritt Island, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization created under founder and former world champion powerlifter Frank Buzzo. It was created to encourage increased strength, self-esteem, and work ethic in personal goal attainment in powerlifting. And whereas the FCYP team is comprised of Merritt Island High, Cocoa High, and UCF students that train several days a week under Buzzo's help and guidance. And whereas in 2023, just one year after the team's inception, the FCYP team competed at the WNPF competition in Greenville, South Carolina, where they broke multiple state, national, and world records. And whereas in 2024, the FCYP team went to Virginia Beach, Virginia, to compete at the 100% Raw Powerlifting Federation 2024 World Championships, which is more competitive than the WNPF, they competed against 400 contestants from 12 countries. The competition is the top event of the 100% Raw Powerlifting Federation with more than 8,000 lifters in its worldwide membership. And whereas nine team members lifted their way to five first places plus second and third spots in their weight and age classes, Jarrett Smith, Drayton Barrett, Caleb Hoats, Ethan Underwood, Jack Mosier, Lucas Pollock, Devin Schlotzky, River Dennis, and Mackenzie Davis. The FCYP team's performance also earned them first place in the team championship. And whereas the leadership and support of team founder Frank Buzzo, dedication of the Fitness Club Merritt Island, and the commitment shown by the FCYP team members brings a great deal of pride to our county. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, that Coach Frank Buzzo and all the members of the Fitness Club Youth Powerlifting Program team be recognized for their dedication and achievements done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 14th day of January 2025. And Commissioner Goodson, you want to make a motion, sir?
I'll make the motion for approval.
Second.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Goodson. We have a second by Commissioner Atkinson. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. Commissioners, we'll show that passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Yep.
Mr. Buzzo, sir?
Would you like to speak? You'd have to be on the other side.
You're recognized there at the podium.
These kids started powerlifting three-plus years ago. Their hard work and dedication has paid off. The memories they have made will last a lifetime. I thank God he blessed me to be part of it. Thank you for recognizing their accomplishments. God bless.
I think we, and then we have a framed resolution for you. Commissioner Goodson?
Yep, okay.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, let's all get around here. You might have to pick me up.
That's what we got. Eleven and twelve. Is that a good start?
Okay, commissioners, we're going to go to E2. And Dawn, you're recognized, sir.
All right, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I was asked to give a presentation on the Speak Up Brevard campaign. This is an initiative that started in 2010, officially known as the Citizens Efficiency and Effectiveness Recommendations Campaign. It was approved by the Brevard County Charter Review Commission in 2010. Basically, the program invites residents.
Hold on one second, Dawn. I'm sorry. Let's just give him one minute here.
Oh, good job, chief. Good job, good job.
I'm all for this.
Sounds good. Anytime. Okay, Dawn.
I will recap my first couple sentences there. So, this is an initiative called Speak Up Brevard that started in 2010 during the Charter Review Commission, known as the Citizens Efficiency and Effectiveness Recommendations. And this program invites residents one month a year, normally December, but we've started now doing January, to submit ideas to the county that they think might help improve operations. So, in the, since 2011, we've done over 175 total SEER recommendations of those. We've approved 21. We've approved revisions, meaning we didn't approve all of the recommendation, but there were some elements of the recommendation that we were able to incorporate in our day-to-day operations, and we've rejected 99 of those. Some of the examples from last year is we were asked if there was a way we could include paddle pickleball, I mean, sites on our website, and we've done that. We also extended the hours of our Port St. John Library. So, we do get some good recommendations from that program. Last year, we did some updates to the program. We did some language improvements to make the charter jive with what the board policy is on the program. We also moved the program from the month of December, when a lot of folks are on holiday, to January. And then we also moved the evaluation deadline that the county staff has to look at these review recommendations, review them and evaluate them, and make recommendations. We've increased that timeframe from 45 to 90 days, and that was basically a result of the fact that over the last couple of years, the number of SEER recommendations we've received have greatly increased. We also added some administrative rejection recommendation options for the county manager, which basically allows him to reject a SEER if it's not under the county jurisdiction. We get a lot of those that deal with other agencies, municipalities, the school board. People think the government is all-inclusive, when actually it's not. And then also, if it's a recommendation that doesn't necessarily do with the program, guidelines are, we can remove those as well. The submission deadline this year is January 1st through January 31st. As of today, we've had 22 SEER recommendations. And the evaluation period, again, once that period ends, January 31st, we'll have 120 days to do all of our reviews and evaluations before we turn those over to the board. And once we do, we turn those over to the board. The commission reviews them, and then they'll see our recommendations, and ultimately, whatever the board direction is, is how we move forward. So, once the board has made, before the board makes its final decision, any of the citizens who've made recommendations, we notify them in advance of that board meeting to let them know that we've not only reviewed their recommendations, but we've also turned our findings over to the board, and so you'll be taking action. So, if a citizen wants to show up at that board meeting to comment about their recommendation or at least be here when that decision is made, they are notified well in advance so they can be here. And then also, as far as the program itself, since January 1st, all of the SEER recommendations that have been made to this point are on our webpage. They're available to the public. They can review not only theirs, but other recommendations that have been made, and those will be there through the process and afterward, even after the board makes its decision. We've got them up there from last year and previous years. I wanted to mention as part of this presentation that while the SEERs program lasts from January 1st through the 31st, for 365 days a year, there are other ample opportunities for the public to make recommendations to the board. They can do that on our website. There's a tab there they can go to, and they can, on any given day of the week, at any hour of the day, they can make recommendations. And as you're very aware, they can come to the board meetings and talk during public comments, and they can also reach out to your individual offices. And obviously, if there's a commissioner who feels that a recommendation that's been made bears merit, they can bring it to the rest of the board and see if they can get buy-in from the rest of the commission. So, that's pretty much how that program works. It's as simple as that, and like I say, we're already midway through the month, and that's where we stand.
Okay. Are there questions for Dawn?
Do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
So, for process, are we discussing this after questions, or is this a time for a little discussion?
We don't, we don't have cards normally on items three. There were no other questions, so you're recognized in discussion.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to Don Walker, thank you so much for putting this presentation together and all the work that you have put in to make this year the best it could be. And so, I just wanted to publicly say thank you for that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And so, the last meeting, I remember hearing Commissioner Altman mention that he didn't have, that he hadn't heard of this program, and so that's why I asked for the presentation, so that not only Commissioner Altman could know, but give the public a refresher. And like Mr. Walker said, we've had 22 suggestions so far, everything from faucet repairs to libraries to the animal shelter to department budget accountability. And I just wanted to put this out there, that this program is highly regarded by the public, the residents. They want this program. They fought for it. They voted for it. And if I remember correctly, there was even a rally last year with over 25 residents protesting outside of this very building. And they were asking for a more robust program, and there were multiple articles about this in the newspaper. And I actually was reviewing the minutes from the charter today, from the charter review, where this was brought in. And in my opinion, it was clear that the intention was to have a discussion and collaboration between the county and the citizens, and that goes along with my workshop idea. And if we all remember the April 9th meeting last year, where Commissioner Goodson mentioned more collaboration between the public and the county with this program. And so, I just wanted to bring up again, if anybody is interested in participating with me in having a workshop either February 18th or 27th at 5:00 p.m. to discuss the proposals.
I think that should be an agenda item with respect. Would you mind putting that on the next agenda?
Sure. Is there?
On January 28th would be the next regular agenda. You can bring that back.
Other than voting on it, is there any way that I could, that we could discuss it? That way, I know what kind of agenda item?
We're in discussion now. I didn't see any other. Is there anyone else in discussion on this item?
If there's any interest.
Okay, Commissioner, if you want to bring that again?
Thank you. That gives me direction.
Okay, okay. All right. Commissioners, we'll move into consent. And we do have some cards on the consent agenda tonight. Is there any item that you want to pull off of consent? Okay, we're going to go to the cards then. On F11, we have a handful of cards. Sandra Sullivan.
Okay, so this is for appointments? Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay. Appointments. So, I take objection to a couple of the appointments today. So, this is an email dated January 9th, 2025, from the county. It says, "District 2 Commissioners seeks applicants for three Citizen Advisory Boards. Myra is not among those." Now, at the last county commissioner meeting, I spoke specifically to this point and made a request that we had multiple people that sit on boards that have been on these boards for nearly 20 years. And it's, we have policy on this, that you're not to be on a board. We respect term limits, and not to have them longer than eight years. You advertise what this commission has done in the past, is when somebody exceeds eight years, they're instructed to go and advertise on the part of their district for those, to put applicants into those seats. If they can't find them, then they can waive the term limits. Now, this is from the agenda, and at the bottom, it says, "A waiver of the term limit is recommended due to the difficulty to fill the appointment." I know for a fact, there's a lot of people that want to fill this position and have asked to be on this position, so therefore, I am requesting this board to reject putting Marcus Herman on there. In addition, there are other issues with Mr. Herman in that he led the incorporation committee, a PAC, and used his influence as chair to waive the fees at the veterans. And when I brought it up at a Myra meeting, he suddenly paid the fees. And there's issues with Brown's fields and other things. I'm sure some other people will talk about that. In addition, you know, there is on the Myra website, you see CAMI ads. CAMI's part, some of their members are on that committee, incorporation committee. According to email, Mr. Herman was going to come here under public comment, and if you recall, that the Merritt Island Incorporated got approved under public comment, which is not legal under Florida statute. It has to be on an agenda item. You can't take a vote under public comment without public input. And the other one I object to is Jarnes on the TDC. I looked up the companies he owns. I don't see any that meet the requirement, which is, and the category he's under is for hotel, motel, RV park, some other tourist-related business. I looked up his businesses on SunBiz. I sent you an email. I do not see any of his businesses in that category, so I'm making the recommendation to reject that one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure I say this right. Diana Shomar? Did I say that right? You're recognized, ma'am.
I live on Merritt Island, and I'm here to speak against Marcus Herman as well, because he is so in favor of incorporation, and I'm not. I live on Merritt Island. It was voted down in 1989. It was stopped again in 2012. Why we keep facing it, I don't know. I walk a lot of streets and knock on a lot of doors, and of all that that I've done, I've not talked to one citizen in Merritt Island that's in favor of incorporation. And yet, there's this great effort to push it and ram it down our throats. It's my understanding that with this PAC, that they've already engaged a marketing firm, which is just to put lipstick on this pig, because everybody knows incorporation is going to bring another layer of taxes, and it's going to bring another layer of rules. And we don't want it. We don't need it. And he is so in that camp, and I just, I don't think he should be in Myra. I don't, I think his bias is not right, and I highly object to it.
Thank you, ma'am. Diane Locklayer? Locklayer?
Yes.
is going to bring another layer of taxes, and it's going to bring another layer of rules. And we don't want it. We don't need it. And he is so in that camp, and I just, I don't think he should be in Myra. I don't, I think his bias is not right, and I highly object to it.
Thank you, ma'am. Diane Locklear? Locklear? Ma'am? Thank you.
I'm Diane Locklear. I live on Merritt Island. I was born and raised here, and this has been an issue repeatedly. In my growing up years, it was an issue, and now again, in the 80s, it was an issue, and then now again, recently with some questionable practices that led to there being a study and money spent. And I am against the appointment of someone who exceeds term limits without other people who are interested in those, in seating in one of those positions, who has a perhaps contrary or broadened viewpoint beyond Marcus and the other gentleman. We need some new ideas, and not these same old stale ones that we keep turning down. I don't want another, but it'll be nice to have all the same colored trashcans, is what one of the foul ideas was promoted to people, to try to get behind that, and it was pushed down our throats. We didn't want it. We don't want this. We, I agree with the last two speakers, these people should not be confirmed. There needs to be opened up to other applicants who are interested, but are being ignored. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Stell Bailey.
I just want to repeat what they just said. I'm really worried about the appearances of this and nepotism and potential. I don't understand why we continue to reappoint people that stay on these boards 20, 30, 40 years. I hear through other cities that we don't get enough people that apply. But are we advertising this? How are we pushing this out to get people to be aware of these boards that make very important decisions for our county, and they advise all of you sitting up there? I actually came here because I strongly object to the appointment of Andrew Connors to the Tourism Department Council. I object because he's in health insurance. He doesn't know anything about tourism. Why are we putting this guy on a tourism, picking him out of the entire county to go on this board that he doesn't really know anything about? He doesn't have experience. Additionally, he has a lot of controversy right now in the city of Titusville that I believe, there's alleged involvement and election interference that undermines the integrity and trust that should be foundational for any public servant, such as actions if true conflict directly with the values and standards we expect from those in leadership roles. Is this the best that you can do? And my last issue with this is that a different district is appointing, District 2 is appointing a District 1 appointee. If we're going to do that, you know, maybe Tom Goodson could put me on some boards for Katie's, you know, she's my representative's district. Maybe, you know, Altman could put Sandra Sullivan on some boards for you while you're at it. You might want to really consider that avenue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Jeffrey.
Good evening. Happy New Year. My name is Kevin Jeffrey, President of the Brevard County Republican Assembly. It's an organization that goes back to 1935 in California, and Ronald Reagan actually loved this Republican Assembly. He said, "It's the conscience of the Republican Party." Now, I wanted to just ask some questions here, because I don't know, and I wanted to try to find out about this Andrew Connors guy that you guys are going to appoint to this board, and I want to see if this is the same Andrew Connors. So I'm going to ask a few questions. Is this the same Andrew Connor who harassed his mayoral opponent by putting up fraudulent signs in front of her established area and filed charges against her? Is this the same Andrew Connors who lied to the people of Titusville to get votes and said that he was going to bring in a Chick-fil-A? Is this the same Andrew Connors who engaged the Titusville police to use the Brevard County Sheriff's Department to go after a guy who posted things on the internet about him that he didn't like? Is this the same Andrew Connors who the first day of office refused to uphold the home rule and case law on constitutional rights of the citizens who voted 82% to pass an initiative? Is this the same Andrew Connors who is accused of harassing doctors in a disability investigation and also suing a paralyzed citizen who was involved in the accident with him? Is this the guy? If this is the same Andrew Connors, I want to give you this quote, and it's from George Washington, our first president, and he said this, "Associate yourself with men of good quality if you esteem your reputation, for tis better to be alone than to be in bad company." So in this case, it is better to leave this position open than to put in a guy who has shown himself to have bad character. He has a bad reputation in Titusville. And the thing about it is, I think in a year's time, we're going to have to deal with him. Maybe recall him. But up to this point in time, you do not want to put him and to allow him to be a part of Brevard County and diminish the rest of this county by his antics. This guy has shown himself to be a guy who has bad character. Please, do not, for the sake of Brevard County, put this guy on any board.
Thank you. Liz Michelson.
Michael Lynn.
Michael Lynn, sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't put my glasses on.
Yeah, mine are on my back.
I knew that already, Liz, I'm sorry.
Hi, guys. For a lot of you, you aren't aware of what we're really here about, or some of the issues. We heard about the characters and this and that. I'm here because I'm Merritt Island. Liz Michael Lynn, Merritt Island. Hi, guys. This hopefully will help you cite along, that's the law. It's a list of the board members that were on board, oops, last year I got my. And I feel really strongly about this issue. So the issue that we're having, there is an ordinance that was put into place in 2022. Within this ordinance, there are timed term limits for seating board members, and it's done for a specific reason. And I'd like you to take a look at that ordinance at your leisure, but, so I can just kind of come where I'm coming. On this list, they took away, and it's advertised, if you see on the other page, there's an advertisement for four vacancies, four vacancies. I felt so strongly about a certain individual on the board, actually two individuals. I spoke with Tyler Saroy, who in turn, set up an appointment with Morris, and at that point, I had discussion about this. There's so much to cover, and there's so little time, but this is what it's all about. You've got an ordinance in place, please take, you know, consider that. 20 years is a lot of time to empower an individual that has no oversight, like you guys. You're elected, you're limited to two terms. That's it, end of story. These guys are supposedly limited by eight, excuse me, eight years. You've got, he's here right now, you've got Marcus. Marcus has been on this board for almost 20 years. You've got Andrew Barber, who's been on this board for 15 years. There is a bias. These people are not wrong. It's in Florida today. I'm more than happy to share the article, but they have gone on record as promoting incorporation. They do more for incorporation than they're doing any good for Myra, and I hate to say that, but it's true. I know more details about it. I'd love to share it with any of your offices if you'd like to. I'd be more than happy to sit down with you. But the point is, and I wanted to put this here, you know, why are people corrupted by power? It isn't because it corrupts, you know, what is it, absolutely corrupts? It's simple. They've given themselves the time and the energy, and they have the information and the wherewithal, plus the power of knowledge to know how a system works. Thank you. Please, you've got the law, you've got the rules, you've got the ordinance. Please, do not put Marcus back on the agenda. By the way, they took away three others that were there for only four years.
Thanks, Liz.
Put them away because they were against incorporation.
Okay, thank you. We're going to, so F-12, also we have a card on Sandra Sullivan.
Good evening, Sandra Sullivan. Okay, so what, F-12 is the Board leaves on appointments, and I think a lot of people aren't aware which appointments, who's on what board. So, CFX is District 1, the Eastern Central Florida Regional Planning Council, which is about disaster and evacuation off the barrier island. That is District 1 and District 5. EDC is District 5. Indian River Lagoon Council is District 3. Tourism Development Council is District 4, and Affordable Housing is District 3, and that's the main ones. But one of the things I wanted to point out is, in the recent commission, we had, you know, a few people up here that, well, one that was appointed by our governor, what we weren't seeing that has occurred at previous commissions is under board reports, board reports, this is board appointments. Your board reports is when you are supposed to report to the public and to each other, because you can't talk to each other, except here under, with sunshine. For you to tell each other, hey, what's happening on these boards, because you have that knowledge and they don't, and the public doesn't have this knowledge unless you sit there and watch all these meetings. And so, I would appreciate if this board would do what previous boards have done, and give us an update each month when you go to these boards, because that's your responsibility to communicate to the public at large who you serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards that we had on consent agenda. Sorry.
Chairman, I was just going to ask, is this where I should make my point about F-10?
Okay, let me, let me, that's it for the cards. Are there questions on consent? Is that a discussion, or do you have a question on consent? Okay. Commissioner Altman, do you have a question, sir?
No, just the same.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's do the questions first. Commissioner Delaney.
How would I go about voting no on one thing, but yes on everything else?
You can, you can tell that to the clerk to the board now, and, I want you to say it here.
Okay. All right.
Or is there an item that we need to pull?
I don't.
Or we just, you just, you want to be a no vote on an item?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like, for the record, to reflect a no vote on F-11, and yes on everything else.
Okay. Commissioner Atkinson.
I would like to, for continuity, say that I'm a no on F-10, and yes on everything else.
All right. Commissioner Altman?
Yes, I'd like to register a no vote on F-10, and yes on everything else.
All right. Okay, fair enough. That was from F-10, just for everyone's information, that's the findings of fact on the item that we had on the last zoning meeting, right? Just to clarify for the clerk. Okay. With that said, for the rest of consent, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Goodson, we have a second by Commissioner Altman. Clerk will call the rule.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. Thank you, commissioners. We will go on to, sorry. We're going to go on to public comments in the G section. Charles Tovey.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. Happy New Year, happy day. We all woke up today, it's the gift of life. Life is a learning experience, unless you're a moron and can't learn about mistakes and don't want to grow. Besides that, another suggestion I would want to make is putting your district numbers by your names. That way, everybody can clarify who's voting what and this, and sometimes there's clarification issues, and it would help me. Thank you. Commissioner Felton, I'm holding you personally responsible, and whatever people do to me, they do to God, because I give my life and my soul first to God. Whether, however discretion, I'm a disciple of Jesus Christ, God, my Savior, and I'm learning, and it takes me a while, and I've enjoyed learning and being close to God the past years, and I thank you, Commissioner Felton, and I hope and pray that God rewards you with ultimate blessings, because you've not only recognized my right to live, but you've also helped to restore my life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, which every day is a growing process for me. And I try and enjoy all endeavors of life as much as I can, and where I can and how I can. I used to speak twice at every meeting, public comment, and then I'd speak on agenda items as well. Thank you, and I hope to work with you in cooperation. I'm not against anybody, I'm for God and help and love. About sea cows, in the Old Testament, sea cows were used for God's temples, and they could be considered sacred animals, but we have no use for them, so let's make leather coats and tents and stuff for them, and maybe Joshua 7, I'm not sure. The other thing I want to do is, speak, work on is pedestrian safety, especially at Pineda Causeway, US 1 and local area, wildlife, and the lagoon, of course. And I have suggestions for the recovery of Wickham Lake, Wickham Park. When I was a kid, I used to swim there, and enjoyed it, and the fish, and all the other stuff, but now, and it's all relative. I want to thank you again, and hope to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey.
Hi, I'm Kristi from, Kristi Barnett from Sundry. Can you imagine discovering that an easement had been invalidly granted and recorded for your land as bulldozers are arriving to demo? Imagine the mad dash to gather all the information you can and searching for an attorney before your property is destroyed. Imagine presenting the information to those in charge of the project and being told that they intend to proceed by any means necessary. This, commissioners, is the nightmare we have been living since late October of last year. Now imagine that the county is responsible for all of it. When workers started to appear in our backyard, we had to search out plans and found the Oak Park Drainage Project in the works, and then we see that the design of the project had a three-foot concrete pipe cutting through the, right through our backyard, and we were very confused. We called my father-in-law, who was a real estate expert in Northern Virginia, to help. We all started digging through the public records and found where the HOA had granted the county a permanent easement to our property. How can anyone give a permanent easement to our property other than us? My father-in-law is a licensed surveyor in multiple states and found many errors on the plans within minutes. He was as surprised as we were that the project got to the boots-on-the-ground stage without someone discovering this simple property boundary error. He said, and I quote, "Had the slightest bit of due diligence been done, we would not be discussing this. Someone should definitely lose their license here." done, we would not be discussing this. Someone should definitely lose their license here." Mind you, our HOA hasn't owned that parcel of land since 1988. We provided all parties with copies of our survey ASAP, and explained that our HOA doesn't own the land. We joined the meetings that started taking place in our backyard between the county reps and the construction company. It was apparent that we weren't a welcome addition to the conversation. We were told in the most disrespectful of ways by the county reps that they were going to continue to get the pipe in the ground, even while acknowledging that they were using inaccurate engineering plans by any means necessary. We left it with our lawyer would be in contact. We have continuously tried to come to a resolution with the county, and instead of working with us, they've threatened to remove our pool if we didn't sign over the easement that the HOA had given them, a pool that has been permitted by the county. Instead of collaborating, it felt like we were being extorted. Meanwhile, they told the construction company to proceed without our permission. I feel completely defeated as a citizen who is and has always followed proper policies and procedures, only to be bulldozed by my local government, who knew that their information was incorrect. The clear disrespect to us as property owners, mistakes made or not, is unacceptable. The double standard is unacceptable. Citizens are definitely not allowed to just push their way through improper planning, all consequences be damned. Please help me explain to my children, ages 11 and 13, why the government, that is supposed to protect our rights, has instead chosen to bulldoze them and our backyard, while they could have worked something out with us to come to a solution to make this right. I've seen, sent each of you commissioners an email with further details. Please get to the bottom of this, so others won't have to endure. Such a nightmare.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan. I am very concerned about the state of our county. I was up at a meeting, I think I talked to you about this before, up in Titusville. A building whose paints, peelings, and deplorable condition. Goodson's building looks like he just walked out in 1960. This building, very poor condition, leaking windows, toilets that back up, mechanical failures, just, county's not maintaining. We have a hundred, we have eight, almost a billion dollars in transportation deficits. I saw on the bid award, $33 million additionally for the dump out west. What's the total cost on that? I mean, that was supposed to be, you know, around $33 million, then it went up to $40 million. What is it now? But I bet you're not going to tell the people what's going on, because that's what you guys do. There's a lack of accountability, and there's a lack of transparency. So what's coming? We have a fire department, where we're down like 75 firefighters. We're losing them, we're bleeding firefighters, because we're not giving them an adequate wage to live by. The county appears poor, but we're the space center. I mean, we should be wealthy. We should look like when you go to UAE, to Dubai, how beautiful Dubai looks. Okay? And I use that country for a reason, because Dubai is here. You go into the port, welcome to the Dubai of the Americas, with the exploration tower, and the investments, hundreds of billions of dollars here. Is this America, or is this Dubai? But we don't look like Dubai. We look poor. And what I think is coming, is that the tax cap wants to be removed. Because when I was running for office, I was told by staff that they wanted, the county wanted to remove it. I brought you guys an Attorney General Legal Opinion, that was dated 2012, that said, if you had a ordinance for EMS assessment prior to 2002, which we did, then you can move EMS assessment to below the line. But there's no will to do that. So it becomes apparent, there's another agenda. That, my belief is that you're purposely creating a disaster with our fire department, so that you can say to the public, buy-in, here's a disaster, buy-in to tax yourself, let's do away with the 3% cap. That's what I believe is at play. Manipulation of the people for higher taxation. And you call yourself fiscal conservatives. I'd like to see you act like fiscal conservatives. Later on the agenda, there's money that you're moving to one area. It should be going to deal with our firefighters. You should be addressing impact fees that have not been updated in 35 years, and I'm running out of time, I'd like to say more about that, but we're out of time.
Thank you. Diana Shomar?
I think I'll use this time to talk about CRAs. I called, I think her name was Kathy. Anyway, I was very heartened to find out that we're down to 11, because about 10 years ago, when I did this study, we had 22 CRAs. These are Community Redevelopment Agencies. These agencies work by giving a grant to a business. Why, I don't know why public monies should go to any business privately owned, is beyond me. But that's the way it works. And once that grant is given to a business, all the increasing taxes that that business, their property taxes, as they get bigger, all that upper amount goes to the Myra, in my case, but any, a Community Redevelopment Agency that gave the grant. And it goes to them for 40 years. So, of these 11 CRAs that we have, out of our funds, our general budget, $7,361,931 went to these CRAs. Merritt Island got $1,513,986. I'm against CRAs. I'm inherently against it. For starters, it's taking over $7 million out of our general fund. If you do away with them, there's seven more million there that can pay for the things that we really need, instead of painting other businesses' front doors for them. I just, I, most other states have done away with them. I don't understand why we hang on to them here. I don't understand the purpose. I wish Myra wasn't there. Anyway, I'm against them, because they take my tax dollars, and you give it to an agency, and you let them do whatever they want to with it. And it's really very little oversight, and I never voted for CRAs to begin with. So I'm against them. I think that they should go away. I think the county needs the money for the county. Thank you for your time.
Sir, hang on, hang on, hang on. Are you aware that Myra gives $250,000 a year for 10 years to the bridge repair on Merritt Island? Are you aware of that?
No.
Are you aware that they put in bus terminal benches, covers, for people traveling on the bus? Are you aware of that?
It still isn't right.
Are you aware of the fact that they take the maintenance of the beeline, not the beeline, 520, and cut the grass and all that? Are you aware of that?
And they put in the trees, and they got a federal grant, and yes-
So therefore, Myra does nothing, nothing of value, correct? Nothing?
I don't want it. I don't want it.
I know, but you're one of a multitude. So you're one.
I'm not the only one.
Okay. There's three. You're right.
All right. Thank you for the comments and questions. Diane Locklear. Locklear? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hello. Diane Locklear, Merritt Island. I, too, see very little value for considerable chumminess on specific interests that serve a lot of people and make wealth to a lot of, a small group of people. I don't see the benefit, the cost analysis benefit to CRAs. I heard what you said, Mr. Goodson, Commissioner Goodson. And, yeah, that's nice that, you know, they mow the lawns, but the county would have to do that anyway. They don't need a CRA to do that. And I don't see a benefit to Myra, especially if you're going to house it with people who have vested interests and have agendas, and don't care what citizens think. So, that seems to be what it is, though. You know, you don't care what we think.
Okay, commissioners, that's the end of the public comments on the G section. We're gonna move to H1. I see Commander Bernath. Sir, you're recognized.
Good evening, commissioners. H1's a petition of vacated public utility easement at 3214 Armond Drive. It's located in Merritt Island, east of North Courtney Parkway, and north of Smith Road, seeking five feet of a 10-foot-wide public utility easement to protect a, an existing manhole from being covered over with future utilities. There's been no objections.
Commissioner Goodson, this is your district, sir.
Move for approval, sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Goodson.
Second.
Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes, and we'll show that passes 5-0. We're gonna go on to J1. And we have Juanita, you're recognized.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is a presentation to provide background for the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Ascentive Strategy Report. Approval of this report facilitates the continued receipt of SHIP funding for the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, which this year is 2.6 million.
Go ahead.
State Housing Initiatives Partnership, or SHIP, are funds provided to local government as an incentive to create partnerships that produce and preserve affordable homeownership and multifamily housing. SHIP is funded from documentary, documentary state, stamp tax collections. SHIP funding can be used for the following: emergency repairs, new construction, rehab, down payment and closing cost assistance, and matching dollars for federal housing and grant programs. Florida Statute 420.9076 is the adoption of affordable housing incentive strategies and committees. It establishes that each municipality that participates in the SHIP program must establish an affordable housing advisory committee, and produce an annual report on the local affordable housing incentives. In conjunction with the incentives report, the committee annually reviews the affordable housing policies and procedures, ordinances, land development regulations, and adopted local government comprehensive plan. Following the annual review, the committee then recommends specific actions or initiatives to encourage or facilitate affordable housing, while protecting the ability of the property to appreciate in value. Our SHIP funding is contingent on the committee annual report, which is before the board this evening. In closing, we have a few examples of the repairs completed, serving the citizens of Brevard County with our SHIP funding. This is a walk-in shower with grab bars, electric service panel replacement, a full roof replacement, and a condenser unit replacement. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, are there questions for Juanita? Question, ma'am? We're gonna get to that one. Are there any questions? Okay. We don't have any cards. I'm just trying to stick to the process. Commissioner Delaney, you're recognized in discussion.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for giving this presentation. And I, when I asked for this presentation, I just really felt like it was something that the public would be interested in hearing about, so I really appreciate it. And I love that you put in this presentation that some of the different things that this program is doing to help our community, so I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Are there, is there any other discussion on this item? Okay. I think we're looking for a motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. Commissioners, we'll show J1, passes 5-0. Okay, we will go to J2. And Ethan, or I'm sorry, Ian, I was gonna say, I see you over there. Go ahead, sir, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening. This agenda item-
Commissioners, I'm passing out a set of photos that I had received a request just right before the meeting. I saw it. These are pictures of items that are included in the appendix to this agenda item. I was asked to distribute these pictures to the commission.
Thank you. So, Agenda Item J2 is requesting direction from the board regarding hurricane damage to park lands and facilities. We have about $2.3 million worth of damage to parks' facilities, as well as a natural resources project that we currently don't have funding identified for. It provides for four options from the board, or for the board. First option is to authorize the county manager to advertise a public hearing for the January 28th board meeting to recognize unanticipated bounce forward from the charter officers, in an amount not to exceed 2.3 million. Typically, that's recognized in April. This will allow us to move forward more quickly. And it also authorizes the county manager to approve all necessary budget change requests. Second option is a loan from the general fund reserves on an as-needed basis for that same dollar amount, that 2.3 million, authorizing the county manager to execute internal loan documents, and approve all necessary and reasonable appropriate budget change requests. Third option is do not proceed with repairs until a funding source has been identified and approved by the board. I will say that there are potential impacts with that. First being that we are currently in a 90-day window, where we don't have to seek permitting for, to bring these damaged items to pre-storm conditions. It's a 90-day window that is from the date of the last emergency order signed by the county manager. The other thing is that if there is another storm before repairs are done, FEMA will not cover those repairs in the future. And then the fourth option is any other direction as provided by the board.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Goodson?
Question. On the FEMA money, is that two or three years out?
Not typically. We are actually still currently waiting for Hurricane Irma funds, so it's typically more along the lines of five to seven years.
So the $2 million now would be five years, seven years out, right, to reimbursement?
Correct, sir. Potentially.
And what did you say about the permitting now? Would that be easier, or we still have to go through consultants and all kind of engineering, and-
We do still have to do design for some of the repairs. Some of the repairs, we have moved forward with, the ones that we can do in-house, but these are projects that are a little larger. Some of them still need design. For example, the galley boat docks need to be designed for repair, but it's for the permitting. So example would be, we don't have to go to St. John's.
Now, I would assume, Chair, I would assume, like anything else, you would have a Volkswagen dock and a Cadillac dock. Who decides on the Cadillac docks?
If we want to remain where we don't have to pull permits or go through that process, it has to be brought back to the condition it was in prior to the storm. So we couldn't make improvements to those structures beyond what was there before the storm.
That could be a blessing, right?
It can.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Just a real quick question. So, the 2.3 that we're talking about, funds-wise, is that going to spread over north, central, and south? Everything that we have listed here?
It's everything that's on that list. Yes, ma'am. There's no D4 on that list. Just kidding, just kidding. All right, are there any other questions for Ian? Commissioner Delaney?
I just wanted to ask these questions that I asked you earlier, just for the public's sake. Has, have all of these projects been billed or submitted to FEMA?
So, they are in the process. We have to submit to insurance also, and a lot of times FEMA wants us to see what insurance- We have to submit to insurance also, and a lot of times FEMA wants us to see what insurance we'll pay for first, but it's in the process for reimbursement.
And then, do we know how much will be reimbursed by FEMA?
We don't. FEMA could reimburse, you know, everything we ask for minus the insurance. I believe there have been projects in the past where FEMA has reimbursed none of what we'd asked for from, for them.
Thank you.
Any other? Commissioner Goodson?
Frank? This question to you. The FEMA response on the bridge on Merritt Island, they have not responded to that yet either, have they?
No, they had denied it. We appealed it, and it's still in process.
And how many years has that been?
It's at least seven.
We're on year seven, I believe, right now.
Okay. The government works fast, right? Federal government works real fast. Thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Sorry, I have one other question. So, since we're on like a time deadline here, of our four choices, which is the quickest?
Obviously, in my opinion, option one would be the quickest.
Okay.
Because again, it keeps us within that FEMA window, or the permitting window.
Any other questions for Ian? Okay, I had one card, but I think she left, Sandra Sullivan? Nope? Okay. All right, Commissioners, we're in discussion. Commissioner Delaney?
I just, I just have to, have to say this out loud, and I apologize in advance, but, and I understand the time crunch and how, how all that process works, but we're sitting here talking about these parks when we have our firefighters out there who we're in a pretty serious crisis about. And so, I just, I'm frustrated, to say the least. Thank you.
In discussion.
I'd like to make a motion. Will you accept number one? Direct staff to proceed.
Sir.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Goodson to approve option number one, and we have a second by Commissioner Altman. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes, we'll show that passes 5-0. Okay, Commissioners, we're going to go to item J3. This really, we all have to vote on this, but only concerns a couple of you. So, assuming that you've taken a look at this item, between Commissioner Altman and Commissioner Atkinson, we need a chair for the Value Adjustment Board.
I would like to move that we have Commissioner Altman be the chair.
Okay. You didn't give him much option there.
No, I didn't.
Commissioner Altman, sir?
Quick as a drawl.
You withdraw your name?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have a motion for Commissioner Altman to chair the VAB. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I'll second that.
Commissioner Delaney, second. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes, we'll show that. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Kim, you didn't sound very excited about this. This was your item, so, okay, just kidding. We're going to go into public comments. Got a few cards here.
Brent Wallenberg, Felton. I was hoping I'd come up here and save you guys some money so you could spend it on other things. Once again, the sand is, Monday's paper, Florida Today, it sounds like more sand for beaches is on the way for Brevard. It sounds like they're rescuing, but they're spending 47 million. And you can take that sand and put it in the lagoon and put your foot on it and feel the heat from the chemical reaction. And like I say, I'm hoping to save you guys some money because I can see, you know, it's a disaster in other areas. The $24 million storm treatment plans would be unnecessary. In the '60s, all our roads were shelled, so the high, the water that ran off was high pH before it hit. Okay, I'll go a little bit on national and kind of tie it into local. You see around the country, the fires, that disaster was a disaster before the fire started. They got metal roofs, fire retardant, tartar paper, all came, clean the brush from under the eaves, things they could have done before the fire came, and then just lock the doors and you're good. Now, here local, I see a lot of these apartment complexes, they use a whole lumberyard building them. I don't know why they didn't use metal studs, but I think before hurricane, we need to make sure that when, they can withstand the wind and wind tunnel testing or whatever. And there's things that could mitigate the problem, like building concrete walls so the wind would hit before it hit the building. But, one thing I like is when I helped build your hospital here in Vieira, they used tilt wall construction, and I don't see why, if you've got a slab left, be it from the hurricanes in North Carolina to the coast into California, if you've got a slab, you've got measurements that you could prefabricate tilt walls and bring them in on trucks and bam, you've got a doggone community again. And this time, build it back where it's not, don't build it back the same way that was destroyed, build it back that it can take the hit. That dog, they use angle iron, cat operators, proof fabricate everything to where when it comes out, it fits like a glove. And if you utilize this type of construction, then you won't be going back, it could probably take a flood too, from the hurricane on the Tampa to the Carolinas. It could take, it's so, it's like a bunker. But, and it's, it's quick, it's efficient, and you won't be coming back again. That's why FEMA is about to go bankrupt. I don't know how they can deal with all that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Recognized, sir.
Peter Mulhouse, Brevard Renaissance Fair. I live at 3900 Loblawly in Cocoa. I just wanted to come up here and thank you folks for allowing us the opportunity to put on the Brevard Renaissance Fair this year. We spent the last 60 days working around the clock on the Sarno site there. I think we're about ready to open up on this Saturday morning, some very tired bodies, but I hope we make the county proud of what we've done. So, that's really all I came up to. I wanted to thank Commissioner Felton and all the hard work they did putting this deal together.
Thank you, Peter. I appreciate it.
Hello. I'm Andrew Mead. I am the entertainment director for the Brevard Renaissance Fair. Last time I was here, I wasn't as nice.
Were you one of the guys?
But you were trying to take our job.
Did you bring in the sword?
I didn't bring in the sword, no. They made me check at the door. But I do want to thank the Commissioners very much for listening to the workers of the festival and the people of the county, and working with the city of Melbourne to figure out a solution. There's a big strip of what was grassy, uneven land, doing not many people any good, and this Saturday, it's going to be one of the premier entertainment destinations on, I mean, on this coast at least, but in most of Florida, it's going to be huge. And a lot of people are really going to be happy about that, and so I wanted to thank you personally for the roles that you took in making that happen, especially Mr. Felton. Thank you very much. I just wanted to close on, I just wanted to share one, can I share a picture here? Wonderful. A member of our local cast, his name is Adam. He, he came out today, and he's, he took a sapling tree out of his parents' yard, out of his, the yard of his childhood home. Don't tell his parents he didn't-
Is that a shrubbery?
Yeah. Shrub, yes, it's a shrubbery. He didn't ask his parents permission. He was like, I hope I don't get in trouble. But I guess it's not a great image, but-
I think somebody's texting you there.
Yeah, that's his, those are three of our cast members there. We've got Adam, and we've got Emily, and we've got Victoria. They're all Brevard County residents. They're all excited to come out here. And he said, can I plant this tree? And I was like, I don't know, man, and we want to know what the future holds. He's like, well, I want to plant it anyways, you know, kind of like a tree of hope, you know? So, we put the tree in, and hopefully, it bears fruit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jason Barrett. I'm not a resident of this county. I'm actually of Mobile, Alabama, beautiful city, a little north of here. But my family and I travel around the country, supporting our own therapeutic riding program, a nonprofit organization we started over 17 years ago. We work with special needs kids and children and adults with, with different disabilities on the back of horses. Horses are incredible creatures that we've grown very close to, and because of your consideration of the Brevard Renaissance Fair, we've been able to make it down here another year to perform in Florida for your community. It's something we enjoy to do, and we intend to do it in the future if you continue to support this project. We intend to bring all of the skills and things we've learned over the years to support your community. Hopefully, during the weeks of the fairs coming up, in future years, we'll be able to make acquaintance with organizations in your area that support children and those with mental and physical disabilities, and we can show them the skills we've learned over 18 years of running our program. So, we hope to be able to do that. Thank you very much for assisting the Brevard Renaissance Fair in continuing, and we appreciate your continued support.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Recognized, sir.
Thank you. I am also not from the area. I currently live just outside of Orlando, Florida. I work for UCF as a historian anthropologist. I spend a lot of my time cramped in libraries, looking over books that nobody cares about. And I saw something on Facebook, something I never go to, and I highly discourage anyone ever to look at it. But I saw the Brevard Renaissance Fair. I checked it out. I went and I, I talked to them and kind of wrote itself after that. I went down, I talked to them, and I, I thought, this is going to be another one of those things where nobody cares about history, nobody cares about anything that actually happened during those periods, or anything that actually matters to anyone that studies history or cares about the past. During the time that I've been with them, they've taken my expertise in the past, my expertise in, in war, my expertise in, in combat and military engagements, and they put that into modifying and making it as realistic and safe as possible. So, this production, I hope, can be presented in a way that is both entertaining, safe, and instructive to the audience members that are there, and I want to thank you all for giving your, the audience and the vendors, an opportunity to see what I hope to be an instructive and entertaining way for people to see the past as it was meant to be seen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, Commissioners, before we move into Board Report, I want to say something quickly about, we have an upcoming workshop for the TDC items, and so, I mean, that's to be informative. I'm sure you've looked at things too, but I think we have 40 applicants that are coming. We have, we're going to have a presentation by Peter Kranus. Certainly, our discussion, questions, you add all that up, and we're going to ask the applicants two minutes, and on the public cards, also two minutes, and even with that, we'd probably be doing well if we get the whole thing done in less than four hours. We'll put a couple of breaks in there, too. So, just so you are aware of, we haven't, we haven't done a workshop like that together, so I just want you to be aware of, of what we're looking at. With that said, I guess we'll move into Board Reports. Commissioner Goodson, I see you reaching for your light there.
Yep. I've got, I have three things to discuss. I would like the Board to consider a proposal to separate Central and South Parks and Recs Advisory Board, one for the central area, one for the south area. Our office has received numerous requests about this. As you might well know, something in, in Sebastian is totally different, something in Maradona. Would the Board consider that, if they would? Do I have a second on that, even for discussion?
I'll second.
Okay. If that being said, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chair. Discussion?
I was going to say, yes, this could be an agenda item, but if it's the pleasure of the Board to do that now.
Well, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare an agenda item for this.
Okay, sir.
Rescind Resolution 22053 and 23124 and create currents, that creates a current South Central Advisory Board. Prepare a resolution that creates, creates two additional Parks and Recs Advisory Boards, one for the central area and one for the south area, allowing the advisory boards to meet, to occur in each park area. That would be the-
Do we need to-
Would you like to pass that to Morris?
Do we need to vote on that?
Staff? No.
Frank, I don't know if we need to take a vote on that.
If you want to do it as direction from the Board for staff to do the report, you could do that.
We'll do that. We have a motion by Commissioner Goodson giving direction from the Board on the Parks Advisory. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Commissioner Atkinson was the second. Clerk will call the roll on that motion.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. Okay, Commissioners, thank you for that. Commissioner Goodson?
One more.
You have another item?
Yes. You know, December of the meeting, I was kind of moved with the meeting, and I'd like to read my thoughts on that meeting and see if all of us can agree to maybe change our personalities, be better citizens, maybe a little more loving and caring. I want to take a moment to address something that's been weighing on my mind. As a public figure, it is inevitable that you will receive criticism, and you're not always, will not always agree with the decisions you make or the rules you enforce. This is relatively, I'm sorry, this is the reality we all face, but even more pronounced is when the, when you're in the public eye. However, just because you voice your opinion doesn't always mean you should. We must ask ourselves, what does it say about our character when we use our platform to belittle others? Is it not our responsibility to demonstrate decor and professionalism, especially when you're making a point? I believe it is. No one is perfect up here, no one's perfect setting out there, myself included, but I was deeply disheartened by the remarks made from the podium last month. Specifically, the derogatory comments directed at Frank. Frank's role requires a level of expertise, skill, and decision-making, but it doesn't diminish his importance. Frank has done an admirable job, and I do not believe he deserves the kind of harsh criticism or anyone on county staff. I urge all of us to strive for a higher standard in our, in our reactions. The more we divide ourselves with hurtful words and actions, the least we will achieve, the less we will achieve together. Let's choose to build each other up rather than tear each other down. And I'm not doing that. And I'm not doing this because I'm in Frank's hip pocket. I'm trying to do it for us to understand. We surely will get a lot more done if we work together, or if, in other words, to beat me up constantly, to, to challenge me, or rudely, you're not going to get anything from anybody. That, that was my second comment. Now, I have one more, okay? Are you ready?
Sir?
This addresses the Board up here. Commissioner Delaney has requested a board-scheduled workshop on, uh, January thirtieth to talk about fire rescue. Since the scheduled workshop, county's negotiation with firefighters' union remains unresolved. In fact, there's a mitigation tomorrow and potential special magistrate hearing February or January. The county attorneys advised us with letters saying, "Hey, you can't get involved in this as elected officials." All right, did everybody read the letter? So therefore, I'm making a motion that if Representative, I mean, if she would like, Delaney, Commissioner Delaney would like one, she's welcome to have it in her district. I will not be attending because I don't want to be charged by anybody for anything that I can read the letter and say that we're not supposed to be involved. Thank you, Chair.
I have a question about that.
Okay, I think that's fair.
Uh, Morris, can you, can you ex, uh, explain that a little bit? And, um, is there, is there a law, or is it a policy, or is it a, um, pert, uh, issue? What, what is the issue?
It's all of the above. It's, it's Florida statutes, it's the contract with the union, and it's your Board Policy 99, but those all address, uh, when we're in negotiations, limitations on communications between union, uh, the union and union members and the elected officials. Um, all negotiations are supposed to go through, um, the, uh, the chief executive officer for the county, that's the county manager, and his negotiation team with the union. And as we're still in negotiations, and particularly since we're at a point where the union has declared impasse, we've got the mediation scheduled. We have tentative, uh, hearing dates for a special magistrate hearing if needed, if this isn't resolved, following mediation, so there, there is concern that the topics that would be discussed at this workshop, it's going to be very hard to have a workshop where, you know, almost necessarily, subjects that are mandatory subjects of bargaining are going to be discussed by both elected officials on the dais, but also public comment.
If I could pause you for a second, um, you're, what you're, you're preempting discussion that hasn't even happened yet, is what you're telling me. And so I, uh, this was an opportunity to bring the public into this conversation about the fire assessment, and, um, I, Mr. Good, uh, Commissioner Goodson, you talk about professionalism and courtesy and all of that, yet I was not told that this was going to be brought forward here today, and I'm, I am, um, I'm frustrated that this conversation, um, did not take place when I brought forward the idea, um...
So at that, at that time, everyone was hopeful, I think, that the negotiations would resolve, we would get somewhere, and that we wouldn't be at a point where we're still at impasse and where we are, but it looks like, looking at the schedule now, when we're at, uh...
But again, you're, you're preempting the public. You're, you're, this is why we pay you. This is your job, is to stand in line when, when something happens that's unlawful, you step in and say, "Hey, this is, this topic is off limits. We can't talk to this because of Florida state statute, so on and so forth." But to cut off the public from being able to have a voice in this conversation about the assessment is, is wrong.
We wouldn't be able to cut off the public at a workshop. I mean, we'd be inviting issues, so it's, it's certainly problematic.
Maybe.
Almost certainly. I mean, the, the first thing listed on the, on the agenda for the workshop is about, um, hours and working conditions, which is a mandatory subject of bargaining. So it's, during negotiations, those are the kind of things that, that we shouldn't have in a forum like that.
I mean, I'm sure that we can speak about hypotheticals and philosophy without talking directly to negotiations. Is, is that correct?
There is a list of three items for the workshop. The very first one is about subject of mandatory bargaining. It's not a hypothetical. It was your agenda item.
Right, and my point was to talk about the philosophy of how the fire industry is changing, and how do we want to be at the forefront of that, since our, um, our community is so dynamic, probably the most dynamic place in the country, um, for what our firefighters have to deal with. And so it was to talk about the broader conversation of what do we want our fire service to look like here in Brevard County? That has nothing to do with negotiations.
So I, I've advised about the pitfalls and the, the potential issues, and I can certainly, you know, if, if the Commissioners would like, um, you know, push, push a light whenever we get into a sensitive topic. I haven't said you can't have the workshop. It's a Commissioner's motion to, to, um... I, I'm not sure exactly what the motion was, move the workshop.
The motion was to cancel the workshop.
Or cancel the workshop.
Because of the, your letter and the state laws and the county ordinances.
But I think the timing, the timing of the workshop and the current state of negotiations is currently problematic. Now, if there's a good resolution at mediation that comes back to the Board before then, may not, may not be an issue, but it's something you've got on the calendar right now.
I just want to put this forward, that I, I think that this is a tactic, um, and I, I'm embarrassed.
Comment?
All right.
Comment? A tactic that I did, and you're embarrassed by my motion?
Frankly, I don't know who.
Huh. Well, you can still have your workshop. Go to it.
The whole point is so that the, the discussion can be had with the public and the Commission as a whole.
You're a Commissioner.
Are we one person, or are we a board?
Well, it depends on...
And so it was brought forward.
It depends on whatever area you're in.
I, I would think that everyone in Brevard County is, is thinking about this fire issue.
But when your attorney tells you you could get charged with something, do you go down blindly down the road?
No, but that's why we have him.
Okay, we have...
We pay him the big bucks.
Okay. Commissioners, with respect, we, we have two other Commissioners here. Let's let them weigh in on, on this. Uh, Commissioner Altman, I believe you were first, sir.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Is it possible, our counsel, uh, could he read us the Florida statute we're talking about? I think it would give, maybe give us some understanding about what we're talking about.
Um, well, I don't, I don't have that open right now. Give me some time. I do have available pretty quickly your Board Policy 99. Um, give me one moment for that.
Wait, I'll tell you what. Let's go to another question while he's looking it up. Is that, is that good, sir? Okay. Commissioner Atkinson.
Well, mine was going to be for Morris as well, and I had two questions, very simply, what can't we talk about? What are we not allowed to talk about? And then, secondly, what kind of trouble do we get in if we do?
So what you can't talk about are pretty much, you know, anything that relates to working can, anything that's a mandatory subject of bargaining, and that includes things like working conditions, wages and hours, salary, health and safety, uh, management rights. There are a whole laundry list of things that are mandatory subjects of bargaining in a, in a union situation, and it's just hard to conceive of a workshop where you talk comprehensively about fire rescue, and certainly about, um, hours of work without getting into mandatory subjects of bargaining. You know, what could happen? You could be charged with unfair labor practice. Uh, it's a violation of both our collective bargaining agreement with union, but also, again, Board Policy and Chapter 447 of Florida statutes. To engage in those, all those, during negotiations, everything is supposed to go through the, uh, chief executive officer for Brevard County, who's the county manager, taking direction from the Board of County Commissioners. Um, and county manager's been receiving direction from the Board both before and during the negotiation process. So the Board gives direction in the form of budget development and things like that. Board also gives specific direction in the context of, um, collective bargaining at your executive sessions on bargaining, one of which you had last month.
Okay, um, you're still finding a statute there for Commissioner Altman?
Well, Anne, but really, it's, it's a number of, you know, statutes. It's not one specific provision, but it's throughout Chapter 447. But those are sort of summarized and collected in BCC 99, which is, um, states that the purpose of this policy is to ensure good faith negotiations between Brevard County and public employees pursuant to Florida Statute Section 447.201 et cetera, where applicable, um, also articles set forth in the county's collective bargaining agreements. Pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement, it talks about the certification of the union as the representative of the county employees. Um, pursuant to Florida Statutes 447.309, the bargaining agent for the organization and the chief executive off, the organization being the union, and the chief executive officer of the public employer, that's the county manager, shall, shall bargain collectively in the determination of the wages, hours, and terms and conditions of employment of the public employees within the bargaining union, unit, the chief executive officer or his or her representative and the bargaining agent or its representative shall meet at reasonable times and bargain in good faith. In conducting negotiations with bargaining agent, chief executive officer or his or her representative shall consult with and attempt to represent the views of the legislative body of the public employer. But it's not a direct negotiation between legislative body of the public employer and the union. It's between the chief executive officer taking direction from the, from the legislative body and the union. Article 1.05 of the collective bargaining agreement, quote, "recognizes that the county manager and designees are the collective bargaining representatives for the county. The union further recognizes its obligation to bargain solely and exclusively with the county manager and or designees, and to refrain from any direct negotiations with the legislative body of the county, county commission, or any of its members regarding work-related issues." Uh, then it lists all the mandatory subjects of collective bargaining, some of the things I've listed, wages, hours, fringe benefits, health and safety, uh, length of contract, management rights, seniority dues collection, things of that nature. Then pursuant to 447.605 Florida statutes, all collective bargaining negoti, uh, negotiations between a, a chief executive officer, uh, or his representative bargaining, bargaining agent shall be in compliance with the provisions of Section 286.011 Florida statutes. That's sunshine, so that's why those collective bargaining agreements between, or, uh, negotiation sessions between the entities are publicly noticed and subject to sunshine. And then your policy says, goes on to say, "A member of the Board of County Commissioners or their staff shall not engage in discussions or negotiations with a member of the labor union or representative agent of the union during a period of formal negotiations with said union regarding any subject which is related to a bargaining agreement."
I have a question.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry. Um, Commissioner Atkinson was ahead of you there. Go ahead.
I, I know there's a motion on the table to, um, cancel the workshop. I was just wondering if Commissioner Goodson would consider a friendly amendment to maybe postpone it, or...
Let me hear your minute.
Just to, um, perhaps discuss an, an alternative date. I don't know how we would pick a day, but a day that would keep us out of trouble.
Well, I think that's, I think that's a question for Morris, so let's get, let's get clarity on that real quick. So Morris, um, could it be postponed where the cone of silence, we don't, we don't violate that, um, or, or the collective bargaining process? What?
Absolutely.
What could be an option available to, to us and, and to fire? What's?
Yeah, absolutely. And the workshop can absolutely happen once negotiations are concluded, and however that occurs, whether that's through mediation and then bringing back a mediated agreement to the Board, whether that's, whether we go all the way through the entirety of the impasse procedures and it ends up in front of this body to make a legislative decision. Once those are concluded, regardless of how they conclude, you can absolutely have the workshop and talk about anything.
Can I ask one question before we make that motion?
I under, we're, we're going to make sure everybody asks their questions before we vote on anything, okay? So go ahead, Commissioner.
Morris, can we direct the, um, chief executive officer to make the county commission the designee on January thirtieth?
No.
Why not?
Why not? Um, because the whole system is set up so that the CEO...
I don't, with all due respect, I'm, I'm asking legally, why not?
I'm, I'm telling you.
Okay.
All right, the whole statutory scheme of Chapter 447 is designed so that the chief executing officer, uh, chief executive officer is the bargaining agent of the, um, of the county. January thirtieth is the workshop date. Did you mean...
Correct. That way, we're not in trouble, because we're the, we're the chief executive officer.
No, because if this, for example, if this doesn't resolve at mediation, and this goes to a magistrate hearing, at some point, you're going to have to make a decision on the contract as a legislative body, and you're going to have to do that as a neutral. You can't both be the bargaining agent and the ultimate decider as a neutral.
I'm saying for the four hours that we are running this workshop.
You couldn't wear that hat and take it off and not have been, no. You, you're, that's not the role of the legislative body.
I mean, we're, our role is to, is everything in regards to the county, so I, I respectfully disagree.
No, you absolutely cannot directly negotiate with the labor union. You can't take on that role. That's an absolute legal clarity.
Okay, we have another Commissioner in, in here, if you don't mind. Commissioner Altman, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, and I appreciate your effort, uh, to keep us legal, that we follow not only the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. So I do have a question. I was reading some of the statute, and I know we're talking about the budget, but I was a little surprised that, that in, uh, 447.309 2A, a, a, again, this is a process question, maybe help clarify. You know, I was surprised it talked about the actual budget. It says, "Upon execution of the collective bargaining agreement, the chief executive shall, in his or her annual budget, request, or by other appropriate means, request the legislative body to appropriate such amounts, or shall be sufficient to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement." That sounds like it's telling us that we don't talk about budgeting money until we have a collective bargaining agreement. Am I wrong, however, read that, or how, what is the intent of that statute, in your opinion?
I understand why you would say that. I, I think it's saying, um, that once a collective bargaining agreement is reached, it's approved by the legislative body, then it's an obligation of the county manager, as he prepares the budget, to account for that agreement within the budget. So the budget that he presents to you has to be adequate to, to, um, you know, honor the collective bargaining agreement. I don't think it's telling you that you can't talk about budget in the absence of a collective bargaining agreement.
Follow up? That's helpful, that's helpful. So, uh, would it be possible for us to have a workshop to only talk about the budget? Just talk about the fee, the fiscal impact of the fee, levels of service?
The Board can, and there are budget workshops that were, that are scheduled. Now, the specific purpose of this workshop, the first item on the agenda is about, um, you know, hours and working conditions, and it's, it's just going to be very difficult to draw that line. So again, I'm not saying you can't have the workshop. I'm wondering, though, if you want me here blowing a whistle every time we run astray, and, and probably more difficult is that, um, if you have public comment at the workshop, you know, this applies not only to union representatives, but union members. Very diffi, you know, we're in a bad position if we're having to stop the public as they're speaking, so it, it would be very difficult, um, not impossible. Again, not saying you can't have the workshop, but is it advisable to have it after negotiations are resolved? Would it be more productive?
Yes, sir. Thanks.
But that's a, that's a decision for the Board.
Maybe Commissioner Delaney, you can help me with a, with some clarification here, just actually help us. The goal of the workshop is for us as a Board to discuss in the open, um, uh, the issues, because I think, I think maybe there's two things happening in here. And, uh, or to allow the union to come in to air their grievances. And that, and that's okay, either one, but, um, it, it may be that there has to be one or the other. That, that may, that may be the path. So can you, can you clarify what, what it is that you hope to do in, in the workshop? Since originally, what's your item?
It's, it's the first one that you talked about. I'm, and I'm looking also for an avenue where we can solely talk about this issue as a group with the public. Because, and when I say the public, I've said it multiple times, um, that it's frankly not just about our firefighters. And I, I say that with all due respect, but it's about our public as well. They need to have the opportunity to speak... They need to have the opportunity to speak to us about this and tell us what is important to them, and what they're willing to do to participate in, in helping with all of this, and maybe they have some great ideas. Maybe, you know, we can talk about some things like, like purchasing during this time, because we need to do a deep dive into our budget about, and figure out how to get some funding from within our budget, about, to fund our fire department, not just the fire assessment, but it needs to be, like I've said multiple times, it needs to be the fire assessment, it needs to be the, us talking about impact fees, it needs to be finding money within our budget. I, I know of a project today, thirty-six thousand dollars on a shower, literally a stall shower that we spent, and it's leaking. So we, we really need to look into all of these things and have a designated time and space where we can give our fire department the attention that it desperately needs, or, you know, we're going to find ourselves in a real emergency situation.
I, I appreciate that, but it's, so, listening to the county attorney, it seems that the, the only sure bet for a workshop that doesn't potentially get us in a collective bargaining conflict, legal problem, is that the board could have an open discussion, and with staff, and the public could come, but not with public comment. Now, I understand that, I understand that nobody, nobody likes that, but Morris, is that, am I interpreting that way correctly?
I haven't thought about that specifically, I'd be concerned about that. First of all, you couldn't take action, because if there's an item you're gonna take action on, you have to allow for public comment.
But, but I think that by virtue of having a workshop, we're not taking action, isn't, I mean, we could give board direction a workshop, but we don't vote to pass items without noticing it, is that? I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to split it with you here and try, try to find us a good way and, and not have a legal problem.
As far as, as far as budget development and setting the assessment rates and things like that, you can absolutely talk about all that when the time is right, but the budget development process, I mean, we're gonna have budget development workshops in, in March, and, and that will be part of the budget development, hopefully this is all resolved by then. Hopefully, by January thirtieth, we have a, a contract, that'd be great. And then, again, no concern with, with any of the subjects, but I think at this point, it would be very difficult.
Sorry, Commissioner.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chair. I have some, I'd wanna consult before, I'd say that the one-way sort of discussion, board only, is okay, that, that in itself might be problematic, too.
If I could just say one thing?
Well, Commissioner Altman wants to say something also, but let's let him just speak real quick, okay? Commissioner Altman.
I, I think I found the part of statute that really applies here, and this four forty-seven point six oh five, all discussions between the chief executive officer of the public employer, or his or her representative, and the legislative body, or, or the public employer relative to collective bargaining, shall be closed and exempt from the, from the provisions of two eighty-six point oh one one. That's pretty doggone clear. It's a shall, it's a must, and it's all discussion. So I agree with our, our general counsel, I know it's not easy, and it's not, maybe, I, I like the idea of the public workshop, but it does put us at odds with state law and the collective bargaining process, which we've already engaged on. I thought maybe perhaps we could waive that provision, but it's pretty clear in my mind, and I, I, we definitely wanna follow the, the law. And I, hopefully we'll get there in the same place. I think you and I probably see a lot in line on this issue, and we, I hope we can get there, but we definitely wanna follow the process, the way it's set forth in law.
What if we speak, what if I take away that first bullet, and we speak to the assessment, and, like I said, the budget? Is that, is that appropriate?
If I could, if I could, I don't mean to answer a question with a question, but how do, how do we deal with the public comment portion of it? Because it is, it's a two-way, it's a two-way thing. Go ahead, Commissioner.
My concern with taking any action without the public's input is this, this greatly affects them, and so for us to give any kind of board direction without their input, I feel like that's just wrong.
I, I don't disagree with you, but we are going to have a vote on the, on the final product before this board, aren't we? You're gonna present that to us?
There's a couple of ways that could happen. First way is if there's an agreement either at the mediation, or a special magistrate makes his recommendations, and both the board and the union accept that, then we would bring that contract back to the board for approval. The second way is if there's a dispute, if you don't have a settlement before the special magistrate, special magistrate makes a recommendation, and either party does not accept any recommendations, that comes back to the board, and that's what Morris was talking about. You serve as the impartial there between the union and the management, whatever the difference is, it comes back to the board at a public hearing. The board at that public hearing makes the decision as to how it's gonna rule. So the public is that part of that process, because that is a public hearing here in front of the board, and that's a statutory process that's provided for by four forty-seven. Morris can probably speak to that issue more.
Okay, so having heard all of these things, let's, let's just take it apart, because I think we're still having a public meeting, okay, to discuss the, the product, and so certainly, I mean, at that meeting, we, we could have many cards and, and all of that. At a workshop, we would have the same thing. So maybe that's all gonna happen, just at a commission meeting rather than a workshop? Is that? I, I know that's, I know, I know it's not what you want, but we might get to the, to the same place, you're gonna end up with all of the same input, the same discussion, we can have it up here, it's, it's probably the best proper legal way to do, to do that. Is, Morris, does that, does that sound right to you?
Yes, and, you know, I think the board has received input from the public throughout at your various meetings, there's been, you know, probably hundreds of public comments made on the issue of negotiations in the contract since going back to the, the workshop last year, and multiple meetings over time, so I think the board has heard public comment, but just during, as we navigate this negotiation and impasse period, we all need to understand what the, what the parameters are, where the rails are, and that the board is not the negotiating entity, and just can't be by law.
Okay, Commissioner Delaney, what do you think about, what do you think about that? In, in lieu of the workshop?
Well, I would, I would definitely like to still have the workshop if, if the board would like to do that. I still think that we need to designate time to this topic, and while I highly, heavily object to working in front of the public as far as assuming that they're gonna bring up something that they may or may not bring up, something is better than nothing, and I, I believe that, I'm hopeful that you all will agree to still having a workshop.
I don't, I don't disagree with your, your comments there on not having public input. I think I've demonstrated that on, on this board since I've been here. Commissioner Altman, is that a new light, sir?
Uh, no.
Okay. Commissioner Atkinson, okay, so what's the, what's the, the, would, would you see that? That at a commission, because I, I'm gonna try to split it with you, I, I try to as much as possible. If we instead, what, what if we postpone the workshop and we altered it, okay? And we, we still agree, we could agree now to have a workshop in the spring after the impasse period and the cone of silence and all the legal ramifications of that, and that that workshop at that time be dedicated to the fire assessment fee in, in the village? So rather than part of the larger budget, we'll deal, we'll have a workshop just on those two issues, so you could call it method of funding. Would that, would that be a, a compromise with you here on this, this legal process that we seem to be stuck in?
I feel like our people, I, we won't have a fire department at that point. If, if we don't show our people out there that we are actively working towards this, and engaging the public, and engaging our fire department, I don't believe that we will be in a good place in the spring. And canceling this will just kill, kill more of the morale. And it's, I'm, I'm frustrated that my county manager and county attorney did not talk about this to us prior to me putting this agenda item out, because I was very clear on what my intentions were. We had briefings about it, we had conversations about it, and now, in the, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen days prior to, to this, and when we have mediation tomorrow, now we bring this up, and?
I think when we booked, with all due respect, I think when we, when we agreed to the workshop, we didn't have a calendar before us on the, when mediation would happen, you know, those, those other legal requirements in the collective bargaining, that, we, we didn't have that information at that time, so.
With all due respect, the, that doesn't negate my point, that this is supposedly a legal problem because we're in the impasse process, and if that were the case, I should have been told that prior to this point.
Yeah, I mean, we've had those discussions about appropriate topics of discussion for the workshop and what we can talk about, we talked about it most recently at your briefing, so that, that has been raised, but again, when this was scheduled, you know, we, we weren't where we are now, and you have to react to the developing reality. Again, I'm not saying there's a law that says you can't have the workshop, I'm just saying you're gonna be very, very restricted on what's appropriate to discuss, and based on some of your statements, you know, the purpose of the workshop can't be about the current ongoing negotiations, that, that can't be a topic of the workshop at all.
And it wasn't.
Okay, Commissioner Goodson, sir.
Question, was it, when you asked for a workshop, then I think Representative, I mean Commissioner Altman asked you to, did you ask her to write down what she wanted to do at the workshop? Do I recall that?
Yeah, you may be right, your memory's probably better than mine, Commissioner.
I doubt it. But, okay, but then you?
I may have, I don't remember.
Okay, then you provided us a list of what you wanna do at this workshop, of one through ten, or is one through five, right? Right?
I made it maybe more into a pretty package.
Okay, pretty package or a bad package? You gave us what the parameter you wanted to do, right?
Sure.
Okay, so that gave Morris the first time to look at it, and?
I disagree with that.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm, I'm glad you do.
Yeah.
What can you agree on, then? Nothing?
A lot.
Okay.
A lot of five oh votes tonight.
Is there any way, we, is there any way that we can consider things at the January twenty-eighth meeting before making a final decision tonight?
Absolutely.
Is that a possibility?
Absolutely.
Okay. Given that, what is, what does the rest of the board think about that?
I have a motion on the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Altman, go ahead, sir.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I appreciate Chairman Fel, Felton, that you are, that you suggested waiting on this until the twenty-eighth, and hopefully, you know, hopefully good things will happen tomorrow. So that's where my support's gonna be for.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Goodson, we have a second by Commissioner Altman, clerk will call the roll.
Can you repeat what that motion is?
Commissioner Goodson.
The motion is to cancel the workshop.
Thank you. Commissioner Delaney?
No.
Vice Chair Goodson? Yes. Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. Okay, I think that was technically Commissioner Goodson's board report.
Yep, that was it.
All right. Let's, let's go to the other end here, Frank, on board report.
No, no board report, Commissioner.
Commissioner Altman?
No board, no report.
Commissioner Atkinson?
I just wanted to say that, interestingly, when Ms. Sullivan came up and said that she was hoping that we would, in our board reports, report on the boards that we were on, and just wanted to let everybody know that is going to be my intention, so I will have board reports in future.
Okay, I think that's very good, and with that said, I wanna thank the rest of the board. I worked on the, your appointments, and I, I think everybody so far, by your vote tonight, were okay with that, so I wish you luck on those boards, some of them I've been on, and for those of you who are driving to other places, take a county car, do something like that, and we'll look forward to those reports later. Commissioner Delaney on board report.
First, I would like to invite, if we do go forward eventually with a, with a workshop at a different time, and public comment is not included, I, I will invite the public to send me their public comments, and I can read them for you myself. And then, the other thing that I would like to say is, we talked about respect and decorum and all of that earlier today, and with that being said, I would like to deeply apologize to the, to the lady who came up here before, who got spoken to so poorly. A member of the public should never be spoken to in that regard, and I just wanted to apologize for that. Thank you.
Commissioners, I, that, it's okay. We're on board reports, or? Morris, and board report.
No report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, before we're done, let's, we're gonna go back.
Will, will you please talk into the microphone if you're gonna speak to me?
Commissioners, if, if we could, just for one second, we need to go back to one item. Thank you. Commissioner Altman, sir?
Yes, I failed to bring up one item.
Yeah. Go ahead, sir, because we didn't take that up.
I discovered that I had a longstanding prior commitment that I cannot get out of, and I will not be able to present our delegated, delegation package before the, of our legislative delegation. We have a lot of good talent here, and I'm sure somebody would, might be willing to step up and do it, and I have confidence with any, they could do just as good a job as I.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nominate Commissioner Delaney. All right, are you willing to do that for us?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, I, I think my recollection is, Commissioner Altman, remind me, they give you less than five minutes, isn't it? Isn't it very quick, three minutes?
It's not a long time.
Yeah, so you're, you gotta get to it.
But they can ask questions, and with the dynamic presentation, you never know.
I, and I think if you're nice to the chair, maybe he'll move you up. Does that sound, is that your recollection?
That's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
Okay, okay, all right. You accept that on our behalf?
Sure, thank you so much.
Very good. All right, I think we're adjourned. Thank you.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the present. are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.